I would like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone here tonight. I would please ask that you silence your communication device. The agenda for a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Monday, September 16th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers at 301 South Fifth Street will now come to order. We will have invocation by the Reverend Brandon Spain, First Baptist Church. Please rise for the invocation.
Let's pray together. Father, we love you. God, we thank you and we praise you, Lord, that you are a God of grace and peace, mercy and unconditional love. God, we thank you, Lord, that you know all things. And, Lord, there is nothing that ever takes you by surprise. Father, we thank you for all that you do for us. God, I pray tonight, Lord, as this meeting takes place, Lord, that your spirit of peace and calmness, Father, will be in this room. God, I pray for wisdom. I pray for discernment as decisions are made, God. We just pray and ask for it that you will be glorified in all actions. And, Lord, we just ask, Lord, that as a city, Lord, that we will be sensitive to the working and moving of your Holy Spirit. Lord, that people will become hungry for the gospel. And, Lord, that we will live a life that points people to Jesus. And it's in his name that I pray. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Parson.
Here.
Councilman DeGaris.
Here.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Kornman.
Here.
Councilman Black.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none.
My name is Chester Pumper. I'm not in good health.
Sir, sir, we're not quite ready yet.
I thought you called for citizens' input.
Not yet, not yet. You will need, you will need to have a form filled out.
I'm sorry?
You will need to have a form filled out that's on that table on the side. Over in the.
Mr. Pumper, let me help you back here. Officer, would you assist him? I got you there. Officer, would you help him fill his form out? Maybe you or him want to turn it in for him, please.
Item six, citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. First, we have, we have Mr. Dillon Aceval. I apologize on your name, sir. Please state your name and address.
Dialin Acevano, 2559 Highway W, Papa Bluff, Missouri. Also has a few buildings downtown. So, came before you all, or for one, Mr. Mayor and Councilmen, Councilwomen, thanks for having the ability, letting me have my ability to talk here. I wanted to come in front of you to kind of speak on behalf of some of the private investors in downtown and also the Downtown Historic Board who kind of wanted me to come up here and give my opinions and kind of express our concerns with what direction we see going with this, this whole city, how the City Council being moved out of downtown.
Dialin, I don't mean to interrupt you, but could you turn your mic up? There you go. Thank you.
Better?
Can I hear better back there?
A little better. Sorry. So, there's obviously a lot of information going out with what this whole decision is and whatever, what this all means and what's happening. I want to very clearly point out, I understand that this isn't been, this isn't a done deal. We're all looking at things. We're trying to figure out what's best for the city, and I understand that you guys are doing that. I also, I also understand some of the other, the other concerns that people have with, with, you know, how it's been managed and what decisions, decisions have been made and, and things that have occurred or all the stuff that's happened. I don't have a dog in that fight. I have a dog in the fight of keeping downtown going, keeping it, not necessarily keep it going, I want to make it better. Because one of the things that I've always seen when I've, since I've been here in Papa Bluff, been here for about five years, worked here for three years, I always saw downtown as something being potentially there. One of the reasons I got involved was of the Opportunity Zone Program that came out. This program was introduced by the TCJA and it put downtown in an opportunity zone, one of the few opportunity zones that we had in southeast Missouri. So, I took a very big interest in it because I realized that it would be something that could really turn downtown around. Because that's how things like this get turned around. That's how downtown's in, in situations where we have not the best economic development factor. Incentives is what keeps it going. It's, it's, it's cities staying involved. I go all over the country. I look at downtowns. I look at historic buildings, southeast part of the U.S., north, the west, the northeast. I mean, I'm all over the place. I've seen downtowns and what they've done. I've seen the cities that have been a part of that, and those are the ones that really flourish. The ones that we don't see that, that's the ones that we see go down, so ones we don't really have that much interest in. I see, I see potential in Papa Bluff. I see so much potential in Papa Bluff that I wasn't just going to come in and tell people about the potential. I said, "I'm going to do it." And I did. I'm very committed to this downtown. I'm already committed. And regardless of what everybody else might have a problem with of what's been happening or anything like that, I don't care, but I'm committed to this downtown. I've come down here, I've put my money on the line, I've put my neck on the line, I've signed grant paperwork, we've stood up here in front of you all and showed you this grant and what was going to happen. And you guys told me that downtown's in your best interests. You guys have goals to improve downtown, and I want that to be something that we definitely keep in mind, especially with this grant potential. Now, say what you may think, I don't think it's going to look very good about, to the grant in a competitive market with, I'm sure there is a lot of people applying for this grant. It's a very big one. They only have it every so often. So, basically, every downtown in the state of Missouri is probably applying for some portion of it. So, it's going to be a competitive market. It's not going to help my stance when the city's trying to move out of downtown. So, with all of that and with, with, with what's going on with so much private interest in downtown, more than I've seen since I've been, been around, I've always seen, you know, kind of like, ah, you know, it has its own thing, but here in the past couple of years, the last year for sure, I've met a lot of people in downtown, bigger people in downtown that actually can come in and change some things and make some good improvements. And we're going to need you guys' help for that. So, obviously, I know we're not going to vote on anything here tonight, but, and I understand that there are several more decisions that have to go in to this whole decision. And I understand that the land is 58 acres, so 58 acres for a good price is pretty good, pretty beneficial if we can only utilize three acres of it and be able to utilize the other parts of it. And maybe there's something there. I'd like to have a potential conversation with each of you on talking about something like that because that's what I do day to day. I go around the country and I do that kind of stuff. So, I understand that. We understand that. And that's why we're going to ask you to go away from option two and to pursue option three. Now, obviously, option three might be a little more expensive and maybe some people here have a problem with how much money we're spending, but if we're already going to go for option two, I very much feel like it's the same cost as option three. We already own the building downtown. There's something you're going to have to do to it. You can't just leave it there. Maybe you have an interested buyer that I don't know about, whatever, may, you know, so be it. But when you're really looking at the grand scheme of things, we're not very far off from option three as we are with option two. I mean, we can really justify the cost if we want to keep City Hall downtown. And you guys keeping City Hall downtown means that I get to get this grant. $435,000, $434,000 comes to downtown for new sidewalks, better, we're going to bury the lines. It's going to help my project be a little bit more. I mean, we're, there's going to be a lot of stuff that's going to happen downtown. Be awesome if you guys could stay down here and watch it happen with us. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm Thomas Wright. I've got Thomas Barber Shop downtown, been down there for 43 years. Here, a year or so ago, you guys voted to keep everything downtown. You went and made purchases to keep everything downtown, and that probably is part of the reason why Dialin was getting part of his grants. Okay, whenever you decide to move this out of downtown, a lot of that grant money will probably go away. Thing of this, we're still going to have to demolate and take, and demolate the one building we have, going to have to get rid of it, destroy it, going to have to do something with the parking garage, there's something has to be done with it. So, I believe that we should keep everything downtown the way it was voted on before. A lot of people got involved when you were going to go out on Northwest Wood, and that become quite a fiasco. But we thought we had it all straightened out, and we thought you, thought you would do what the people wanted instead of going against us. You were voted in for, to do as we want, not as what you want. And you should realize that most people want the police station and the City Hall to be kept downtown. And all I ask is that you do what the people want, keep it downtown.
We have Robert L. Smith.
Good evening. I'm Robert L. Smith, 501 North Fifth Street, and I have office down at 502 Vine Street. As you know, I'm not in favor of moving out to Shelby Road and spending a million dollars on property and spending 16 million of the taxpayers' money and wasting it. I think four of you are all entitled to that opinion of wasting money. And I hope, I hope somehow one of you comes to your senses. These people are here today. How many people are here to keep it downtown?
Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith, please address the council.
Thank you.
I'm addressing the council. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Can you pull your mic down? We're having trouble.
Sure. Can everyone hear me? Thank you. Well, I think it's despicable what you guys are doing, and I don't see why it's so nice to be, try to be gentlemanly with trying to do something behind the back of the people of Papa Bluff.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
I'm talking now, Mr. Black.
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
He's out of order.
If this continues. This man will not stand here and say that we're doing anything illegal or doing anything wrong. It is a matter of judgment.
It is not.
And he has no right.
Have a right to speak.
Gentlemen, if this continues.
You have a right to speak. Who can speed a motion out of order last time?
If this continues, we will suspend citizens' input. So, gentlemen, let's, let's contain ourselves.
Okay. Well, I think you should suspend the, maybe the votes of these four members of this council. You go behind the people's back, like I said.
Wrong.
And spend 16 million dollars on a, you tried to buy the Northwest Medical Center, and that fell through. That was a fiasco. Now, this is going to be a fiasco. You're going to take four acres, prime tax generating property, and pay a million dollars for it, and we have the property already purchased downtown, and it was unanimous vote. Wasn't it, Mr. DeGaris? It was, how much were they going to spend when they're going to build that? Remember?
I think the last estimate I heard was.
Citizens' input does not include Q and A.
Seven million? Seven or eight million? So, now they're going to double the price, and that's for the best benefit of people of Papa Bluff. I've worked hard in this town to make it better, too. Robert and I, the mayor, and I started Boys and Girls Club. We get to St. Vincent de Paul Project, the old City Hall, that was remodeled. We got Black River Public Radio started. We got truancy court started as a judge. And all these things, what have you guys done? Promised to bankrupt the city. We can't even pay all the healthcare costs of our employees. And so, you're going to tell me you're going to build a 27, or probably because there'll be cost overrides, 20,000 square, 1,000 square feet building, and you can still maintain it for the same amount of money as you do now? No. I think that's ridiculous. I got six more minutes to tell you how I think you guys are about unloyal Papa Bluffans as there are in it I've ever seen, going against your own votes as you've done in the past. And I would like to know what's a special interest here of those four members.
Mr. Smith, and I'm going to stop you just for a second. Have you, have you had a change of heart since the last time you were up here when you voted, or not voted, but ran it and raved and cheerleading to send $20 million out of, up north? Have you, I mean, so now you're a big fan of the citizens.
No, I was trying to lower the, the tax rate for the sewage project for every citizen in this town. So, don't talk to me about this.
You would have hurt a lot of local families.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, we are here to listen to the community. At this time, we cannot entertain questions. Please, please, let's just speak to the council and.
Mayor, I agree with you, but we are neither here to hear disparaging remarks that indicate.
Or the truth. Or the truth. Or the truth.
That indicate that we are doing something wrong. That's the people's call.
Yes. They're scared of the truth.
Talk away. Just don't.
But don't talk about your abilities as a businessman, Mr. Kornman.
Mr. Smith, this is, this is what it would get down to with the personal tax. I mean, we could, we could go back and forth, but just.
You started it.
Citizens' input. Let's go. We have five minutes.
Yeah. This is a mistake of gigantic nature that, that's going to affect downtown, just like when we voted to keep the post office downtown. Does everybody remember that? Remember what happened to the post office? The City Council tore it down. We got, now, we got a parking garage that has to be torn down. Probably, you guys don't know that because you don't care that much about Papa Bluff. You just care what, you're going to make this magnificent structure out there on PP and Shelby Road for your own edification, I guess. People don't want it. See what the chamber survey was, 87% against it. You do serve the people. Please be mindful of that. I think as you listen to the people tonight, you'll finally decide that maybe you made a mistake, and that you'll get past whatever interest you may have in not serving the people of Papa Bluff and serve them. I think as you look through this town, you see the immense growth, and you see the interest in the downtown Papa Bluff. And, you know, you see Mr. Smith here as a mayor who's done tremendous job over the years, served on, serving as, on the council. Mr. Richardson, I admire immensely as a judge, what he's done for this community. Mr. Mattingham, he's carried forth the ideals, he was the first one to brave, making the streets two-way finally. Look what it happened already. It's already an improvement. Mr. DeGaris, who's been here for, you know, I think, I think been on City Council forever, and he knows what's right for this town. We've got four newcomers who think they know better. Ms. Horton, she knows what's better, best for downtown. She's for keeping it downtown. She's been here, she's a proponent for a long time. Let's listen to the people who've lived here, have done things for the community, not few upstarts who come in and say, "Let's pay a consultant $600,000, then an architect another $600,000, $800,000, just so they can fill their pockets." Instead, why don't we have Dillian Traxel design the project they were meant to deal But that's probably too much to ask. I've seen, I've been through the years of this council, I've served as attorney, I've seen this ups and downs, but it's always gone down when you have not listened to the people. Now, I ask you to do is one of you, please come to your senses and listen to the people like Mr. DeGaris, Mr. Smith, Ms. Horton has done. And let's take this town into a new century of prosperity downtown. Look at the lights they've put on. That's amazing. And they just got a grant to develop the next block, what they're going to continue to do, probably go around to Main Street, but if you abandon downtown, all we have is empty shell, because they'll, they won't get the grant, there'll be no incentive to continue to develop downtown, because the people won't come downtown. You're going to make people walk to court all the way down Shelby Road from the east side. I can tell you, the 8% of people who go to city court are the poor people. I think we should have some respect for all the individuals in this town, not the few with the influential people, not the ones you chummy up to, go to casinos or gambling and go out of town with. It should be the people that, ordinary people we serve, the ones at Myrtle's, the one down at the Foxtrot. People go to the food pantry even. They deserve respect. They deserve a town that they can come into and enjoy. And I think that, you know, if you continue with this, that I believe that if you four try to run for another office in this town in Butler County, there won't be a chance of reelection. Because I will put the truth out there, what you've done, I will keep the public aware constantly of what you've done. You see what Facebook can do, it will continue to do that. If you guys can't face the truth, then maybe the people can make you face the truth by not re-electing you. I think it's something shameful. I think we should continue on with trying to serve the people. Shaming them with $16 million project is not something that should be done. Blowing the budget up, how are you going to maintain that gigantic building? You're going to have to cut the wages more, you're going to have to cut the number of policemen, firemen. We don't have enough tax revenue to, to keep what we have. I want these people all to speak their interest. I hope they all speak it for 10 minutes exactly, tell you what's wrong with this plan. We've got nine seconds left. And I hope all of you will listen to the people and not to your own interest.
Ben Traxel, 4061 Highway PP. And that's going to be tough to follow here, but I've prepared a statement here that I'm just going to read, so I'd appreciate it if you all listen here. "Thank you for the opportunity to come before you. I applaud your willingness to serve Papa Bluff in this capacity and to listen to those in attendance. I would appreciate you taking into account critical factors that have been voiced in the past and voiced again tonight when making any final decisions on the City Hall and Police Department construction matter. First, before I get into site concerns, I'd like to say that we, Dillian Traxel Architects, refute the statement made by your consultant at the last City Council meeting and find it offensive when he said that our firm could not perform the services his company is able We have already performed many of the same services as well as other very important ones that have not been replicated, such as engaging the citizens of Papa Bluff. We have the full capacity to perform any remaining services if the city so desires. There are standard, these are standard planning services provided by licensed architecture and planning companies. They are not unique. Since 2014, our work was performed through the turmoil of a contentious and fluid City Council and three separate city managers, causing our work to be quite difficult as there were a host of agendas and angles, starts and holds throughout the process. The city advertised, and we were selected three times to perform work related to a new municipal complex, and there are ordinances that state this. We have a signed AIA contract by ourselves in the city, and the City Council voted twice, I believe unanimously both times, to locate the complex on Second and Oak. The third time we were selected, the ordinance permitting the city to enter into a contract with Dillian Traxel was not site-specific. That was when the site issue was back up in the air and the city was contemplating Northwest Medical Center again, after it had already been written off once before. We did some investigating, but with the public backlash about that site, it appeared to be dying, and there was no need to prepare a full contract from that ordinance. Now it appears the city is electing to procure an architect yet again, and yet we have no idea if you have any intent to honor your previous selections or current contract with our firm. Dating back to 2014, we have spent hundreds and hundreds of hours working for the city of Papa Bluff, of which we have built and been compensated for very few. A large portion of what we have been paid has gone to engineering consultants for surveying work and mechanical and structural evaluations. We have intentionally kept our fees extremely low thus far to be good stewards of our community. This is not something we would do for just any client, nor a service you would receive from just any consultant. Now, on to the location. First part is together or separate. Does the City Hall need to adjoin the Police Department? I see no reason why this should be the case. They are separate functions, and more often than not, in cities the size of Papa Bluff and larger, are separate. A City Hall needs to have a promotional aspect and appearance of invitation, be positive and welcoming. A Police Department needs to be efficient, but it will carry an image that is in contrast to City Hall. For this reason, for the betterment of the community, I believe they should be separate buildings in separate locations. The Police Department location, there are two sides to this subject. A, it needs to be located where response times are short, where a city is growing, where there is the most likelihood of a large-scale disaster. Or B, it doesn't matter where it is built because officers are not responding from a Police Department building, they're on patrol and zones all over town anyway. I'm not a police officer and cannot claim to be able to expertly choose between one of these theories. In my eyes, they both have merit to some degree. In the right location downtown, it would work. Shelby Road would also be fine due to its convenience to areas of large population, such as the high school, hospital, and industrial park. I think we all agree that either one would be much better than what we currently have and have had for the last 20-plus years. If Chief Whitley believes in one location over the other, I'm inclined to stand on his side. Now, the City Hall location, and this is the most important piece here. Good or bad, every city has an identity. It is remembered based on the experiences people have when visiting, moving about, and participating in what a city has to offer. Cities with a positive identity are unique. They stand out as being different and special. When a city cares about its buildings, its history and traditions, it shows civic pride and garners community support. It shows it cares about its image to others. To say that our, to say that our downtown is dead and cannot be revived is lazy. There are countless success stories throughout the state and country of revived downtowns. Not long ago, there was a program put in place called the Dream Initiative, in which Papa Bluff participated, but without a local government jumping in with both feet. But without a local government jumping in with both feet and promoting development incentives, programs like these die, and downtowns continue to flounder. For the downtown to come alive again and flourish as a city, a city has to make a real commitment, and to date, the city has not. Poplar Bluff has, has had Academy Sports, Menards, Walmart Neighborhood Market, and others come recently. Great, more commerce, more tax money available, and more people being lured to the city. When these places are the only destination points a city has to offer, they become the identity of the town. Every town has an Academy, Menards, and Walmart. They provide nothing unique, different, or special. These destinations are exactly the same in every 20,000 population city in the Midwest. In other words, they are forgettable, and as the only destination points, make the town forgettable. A city hall is a landmark building. It houses the leadership of a community. Leaving downtown shows a lack of commitment to a unique identity. Building it downtown shows respect to our past leaders, shows a commitment to a rebirth of a city, and it shows the city is proud of its past and has faith in its future. It shows a willingness to promote its features instead of hiding from them. Do it right for the long-term future of Poplar Bluff. Build a new city hall downtown. Now where? A location not discussed to date is on Fifth Street, from Pine to Vine, across the street to the east from the current city hall rental building, and presently a parking lot. This has been an open parking lot for as long as I can remember. It has also been a major entrance, if not the major entrance, to our downtown, especially for those coming from the growing areas to the west. It has been owned by the city for years and has been underutilized, not working at its highest and best use. A landmark city hall building at this location would not only provide an anchor, but a front door to our downtown, and would be a magnificent statement in recreating Poplar Bluff's identity. It also frees up the Second and Oak property to become part of a continuous river park district, one that could stretch from Clinton Park on the south, all the way up to Hillcrest Park, and possibly even across the river to Sportsman's Park and the ballfields behind the old Riggs Building. This is an opportunity for an incredible identity to be made, both with the downtown and city hall, and the park and river systems. It would indeed be amazing, and it is entirely feasible. Thank you for your time.
Good evening to you all. Is that better? Better? Good evening to you all. I come to speak tonight from my love of Poplar Bluff and with great respect for you as the elected leaders of our community striving to make a difference.
Excuse me, please state your name and address.
Oh, I am so sorry. My name is Sandra H. Elliott. I'm an over-30-year resident here. I own property on Main Street. My home address is 194 Tomaro Trail, Poplar Bluff. Poplar Bluff. What makes Poplar Bluff, Poplar Bluff? Why is it any different from thousands of small towns across America? The very core, the heart of Poplar Bluff, is what makes it that unique snowflake in a blizzard of seemingly identical small towns. So what is the heart of Poplar Bluff? It is our main street brick, a rare living piece of history, a path to our founders of the past, and a path into our future. It is the Black River that kisses our downtown alone, offering possibilities that other towns envy. It is the courthouse that stands witness to the resolve of this community to continue to thrive, even in the face of destructive forces such as the tornado. It is the beloved library that provides so many learning opportunities for every generation in our entire county. It is the art museum that brings unique opportunities to a community of our size. It is the history museum in the Mark Twain School Building that is caretaker for so many moments in the fabric of our town. It is the Rogers Theater with so many wonderful experiences in the past and experiences yet to be. It is the Parks Department, the city pool, the skate park, the railroad museum, the Amtrak Depot, the farmer's market, the Coliseum, the post office, the sheriff's complex, the fire station, the churches, and all of the many local small businesses that serve our community in their downtown location. And at the core of this heart of the city is the city hall, the heart itself that pumps the lifeblood of community and commerce that is Poplar Bluff. Downtown Poplar Bluff need not become a ghost town prematurely. With the city hall and accompanying complex committing to remain in downtown, we can even surpass what other small towns have accomplished in reviving their downtowns. Let us embrace the voters' cry to stand fast and show faith in our downtown, to work together, to hold on to our past as we build for a future for our families. Please stand by us, your voters, as we ask that you keep our, and it is our, city hall complex in our downtown. While Poplar Bluff is not my personal place of birth, it is my family's chosen hometown. I would like to share with you the back-from-the-grave success story of my true hometown, of my birth, of both my husband and myself, Laurel, Mississippi. Their national success story began with much less than our downtown already has. And it started with one couple who loved that town so much that they were willing to invest and ask others to join them. And should you like to know more about it, I'd be happy to tell you. I have information resources for you. Laurel has been picked up on national TV with HGTV, and the program's called Hometown. It's one couple restoring neglected homes, historic buildings, bringing industry, and they have become a destination nationally for people to come and move to because there's such a sense of community. And I will pass these out to you, but I would like to leave you with one thought. Will future generations of Poplar Bluff and Butler County residents remember this city council as the visionaries who laid the foundation for an enduring rebirth of our entire community? Or will this city council's legacy be one of regrets and of apologies for a lack of faith in the vision of our citizens and their work and their will to work shoulder-to-shoulder with you to ensure a bountiful life for all? Please hear your constituents and work with us. We do not expect you to do it alone. But shoulder-to-shoulder, help us keep this key, irreplaceable part, the heart of Poplar Bluff, where it can give rebirth and a vibrant life to downtown. I thank you for your service to our community and your consideration for our future, and I have great respect for elected officials. And freedom of speech is not to be taken lightly, nor should it be used to debase anyone, and I hope that you will be treated with the respect that you are due. And with that, may I pass these packets out? And again, if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but I will take no time for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Please state your name and address, please, for the record. My name is Jack Altman. I reside at 2404 West Maud Street, City of Poplar Bluff. A lot has come to light this last week. I see things going different directions here, and I've missed some council meetings. Maybe I'm in the dark here, but it seems like it's kind of fast to make a motion to improve, not to improve, but to move our city hall and our police station outside of the downtown area. I don't claim to be a rocket scientist or an engineer, but I think that in my construction background, I know to rehab and renovate a building is a whole lot cheaper than to build a new building. And for what it's costing for that building out there, what could that funds do for our officers, our firefighters, our street department? What could that kind of funds do to help us build our city that we need and still keep the cost down there? We don't see enough of the officers downtown now, in my opinion. What's going to happen when they move city hall and the police station out of downtown? Are we going to see officers even less then? I would hope not, but, and there's people right here in this room that have worked very, very hard to improve the downtown area. And does this city council not believe in what they're doing? You just want to walk away from everything that they've done and go do your own thing out somewhere else? Every council member here works for the people, your elected officials. We can campaign for you, or we can campaign against every single one of you. Thank you for your time.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Pardon me?
Your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Charlotte W. Craig, and I live at 1400 Lurlin Drive in Poplar Bluff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members, for allowing me to speak. First off, I think Danny Whitley is the best police chief we've ever had. And if he, if he wants, if he wants his headquarters in a place that's, that's easier to get in and out of, I say he should get what he needs. But in terms, in terms of city hall, I just, I just want to beg you to please stand by the city council's previous commitment to downtown. How long have we waited? How many decades have we waited to see the downtown come back alive again, the way it was when I was growing up with Christmas lights and stores and all kinds of stuff? And it sounds like we may be on the verge of some wonderful development downtown. And if city hall isn't there, I think the speakers who have said, it's, are correct when they say, "City hall is like the heart of the city." It, it's like our heart will have been torn out and put somewhere else. Just please, please stand by downtown now that, now that we have what looks like a chance to really make some difference downtown and really create a personality for Poplar Bluff. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Felix Baker, 3500 Marble Hill Road, Poplar Bluff. I'm kind of a newbie to the Poplar Bluff area. I've only been here 66 years. I've lived on Main Street for most of my life at some point, and now Marble Hill is outside the city limits, but it's still the same street. It's just extended a little bit. So, I've been on Main Street most of my life, other than my college years and being out of town. Poplar Bluff to me is home. The new people on the council, I don't know, but I guarantee you, I've got a house in your ward, I've got a house in your ward, I've got property in your ward, and I've got property in Mr. Shane, I've got property in your ward. I have property in yours, Mr. Smith, and also you two. I own property in every ward in this town. I wish, and downtown, a lot of property downtown, so I have a vested interest and have been for a long time. One of my businesses downtown, been at Prince, been there years. I wish, and my hope, is that you all consider, again, police station, I don't care where you put it. I mean, it can be anywhere, but most of our crime, in most cases, you've been a police, no, you have, your brother has, but most, you've been a policeman, but most of our crime, at least the ones I've seen lately, probably the cemetery south, most of the shootings, most of the, that needs to be responded to fairly quickly. Maybe a wreck may be out on the highway, maybe some other things, but most of the stuff is in this area. Again, I don't care where you put the police station. It's, it's, this town is accessible anywhere in it within 15 minutes, and if you're in a police car with a siren, that time can be diminished greatly. We just made a big pass to the south. If you're, you know, if you're in South End, you can get to Menards in minutes. So, so we've done a lot of stuff infrastructurally to make it very easy to get to anywhere in the city. I want you to, if you're going to represent me and my property, all of you, I wish you would vote to keep downtown city hall. Again, I respect you all. I don't think you're overpaid for your positions. You know, you don't spend it all in one place. But, you, you know, I don't know where, again, I, I just wish you would consider staying with the course. Again, we've got some, we, again, the last time I was here and we were talking about out on Bearin Road, we don't have any structure sidewalks for people to walk to that property. They're going to go to city court, and they're going to go, where they're going to go. It's, it's your responsibility. If somebody gets hurt, I hope you accept that responsibility and the city gets, takes care of that person. Because there's no structure out there to walk from east side to there. There's a lot of things like that. The, the police station, again, one of the things I would like to keep at downtown is time to go to court. I don't know if you all noticed, but in the last five years, gas has gone up, prices of cars have gone up, wages have gone up, and every time you transport a prisoner, which you can say is pretty often, they're going to have to go to the courthouse, those costs are going to, they're going to keep continuing to increase. Good, bad, or indifferent, it's a fact. Not only that, but you're going to have to put infrastructure if you're going to have people out there for safety. You're going to have people walking in the street. What happens when one of them gets hit? How many of you are going to feel responsible for that injury? And in reality, it's a result of this council. So, I, I just implore that you do consider, and I know, I know you have, I know every one of you have a reason for why you voted. I know you have. But if I'm, if I wasn't, I'm an auctioneer also, and I work on a commission. And you know what I want? I want to bring the highest dollar that seller I can bring. If I'm a consultant, guess what I work on? If I was a consultant, I work on a commission. Guess, how do they make their money? They're going to make the best decision in their interest, along with yours, but they've got, they got a vested interest in money. So, taking all that into consideration, I wish you would reconsider your votes. Take time, we, we've got a good thing going. Last time I said it was going to be a water lift, you went out there on, and voted, voted the hospital in, because that was the same thing. It was, you know, this is going to be a new building, but like I said, some new properties, I never had thought of this, with that, that property across from where the city hall is now, easily can make, you know, could be made into police station or some other things, and very local, and very easy to get to anywhere. and very easy to get to anywhere. We need to reconsider some of the things we've had. This is, I mean, if we're going to move it, let's do some, a little bit better time, talk to the people, see what they're thinking. Not an instant time. The last time we made a real fast decision was on the cable company. Some of you weren't on the council, some of you may have been, I don't know, and that's not important. But I don't remember, the fast decision lost us a building, because nobody knew that the building was going to be in the price. It lost us money we had to pay back for all the subscriptions. Fast does not work. If it's worth doing, it's worth doing right. It's worth taking the time to make good decisions. Get to the people, see what they want, put it to a vote, do whatever. Find something that works and not make everybody mad in doing so. And don't, and there's no haste, because that property will probably be there, and if it's not, there's another piece of property. It's just another deal. That's not the, you know, best place out there, and nobody said, "That shall only build here." So if you will, please reconsider, think about it, and give us, if you need to, take more time with this decision, because it's an important decision for Poplar Bluff. Thank you for your time. Appreciate you.
Phyllis Baker, 3500 Marble Hill Road. The last council meeting I attended, there was a vote. It was split four to three. Four votes were to proceed on with a proposal by Navigate. I came up here tonight with four questions, one for each council member who voted in favor of proceeding on. Is it correct? It's not a question and answer time?
No, ma'am, we cannot entertain questions.
Okay. So instead of that, can I ask my question, knowing that I will not get an answer, but the question will be proposed? Subfair? Everybody agree?
I think so.
Number one, I would ask Councilman Ron Black. Did Navigate choose the sites, or were they given the sites to evaluate? Were they sites that they evolved with? Mr. Traxel was up here and identified a couple of other locations off the cuff, and I'm just curious why these sites were chosen. Number two, I would address to Councilman Steve Davis. Is there criteria that was evaluated regarding the location of these buildings? For instance, were there 30 questions and they were scored? The cost, the upkeep, the distance from here to there, how it would impact the community? Were there criteria scored regarding the only locations, too, that Navigate evaluated? That would have been my question. Number three, I would address to Lisa Parson. In my opinion, the city has not been an excellent groundskeeper. There have been issues with buildings and upkeep and maintaining. You're in this location that you're in now because a building was not properly maintained. My question for you, Councilman Parson, is did you ever consider having a building built to suit your needs and renting from a developer who would be charged with maintaining the facility and remove that responsibility from the city? That's a question to consider. My number four question would be to Councilman Cornman. And my question is, on Shelby Road, I believe Navigate said that the consideration for the site would be four acres. Was there an estimate of revenue lost for potential business on those four acres, tax revenue, property taxes that could be generated over a period of 20 years? What are we gaining, but what are we losing? Those are my four questions. I understand you are not obligated to answer them, but perhaps in the future, you would feel inclined to contact me and answer them. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, girls.
We have Ms. Pam Goyer. Okay, I'm sorry.
Nobody gets it right, ever. It's Pam Goyer. I reside at 111 Hampton Court. I own a business downtown at 420 Maple, the Office Bar and Grill, just across the way. And although I'm 100% pro downtown, I'm not here for this issue that you all are discussing tonight. I just would like to obtain permission on five consecutive weekends, September 28th, October 5th, October 12th, October 19th, and the 26th, to allow me to serve alcohol on my premises in the outdoor area. And I'm told that I have to obtain permission before I'm allowed to do that due to a city ordinance.
Yes, that is true.
What's the right procedure for us to address the question, counselor?
You may inquire of her, Councilman, to clarify what her request is and whether there are any special circumstances for her to ask or support her request, or mediation from our normal policy.
Well, I'm trying to determine that we only, I'm not speaking for or against you at this point, ma'am.
Right.
But to determine that we do move it through the correct process. Is this something we would decide tonight, or simply?
No, but you may inquire in order to clarify. But it would be something that we would normally put on a workshop agenda.
Okay.
And would probably be taken care of by voice vote or a motion.
Okay. I think what the council is, yeah, the council is saying, as I understand it, is that the proper method, it's fine to bring it to our attention tonight, but that you would come back through a workshop session and then a vote, rather than all doing it at one night? No?
That's not what I was telling you.
No.
Well, I may be wrong.
Come on up, Jerica.
Please come on up, Jerica.
Jerica's coming. I could be, Jerica Fox, 501 Vine Street. I could be incorrect, but I believe she has a liquor license.
Okay.
Established indoors, but not for her outdoor patio. And so I believe it would be similar to like when the Butler County Fair comes and asks for permission to sell outside for that one day, or bronzow for the outside party, things like that, or haffies, things like that. So I believe it can just be a vote here tonight, just like we did for Iron Horse. Yes. Just trying to help, sorry.
You're helping, thanks. And tell me again where you're located, please.
I am in the old VFW, the little white building right behind the train depot. It's a white-sided building, the Office Bar and Grill. The address is 420 Maple, but it's kind of, but to explain what he had said, September 28th, that's the Iron Horse Festival downtown, and so I'd like to be a part of that. There's going to be a band right in your parking lot, and I'd like my patrons to be able to sit in my parking lot and listen to it. And then October, the four weekends, the four Saturdays in October, we're going to do an Oktoberfest.
I believe what we've done in the past, we had, we would need a motion and a second to approve that, and I believe you've done that once last year in your, or last event.
Fourth of July.
Yeah. So...
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Before we move further, could you repeat those weekends again?
It would be Saturday, September 28th, Saturday, October the 5th, Saturday, October the 12th, Saturday, October the 19th, and Saturday, October 26th. And the 19th, that is also a fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club.
The 19th is a fundraiser for Boys and Girls?
Boys and Girls Club, uh-huh.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
When you go call, I'll just...
No, I think we can do it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, you'll probably need to get with, debate on some...
Yes.
Licenses. Licenses and permits.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, we'll have Mr. Ron Hill.
My name is Ron Hill, and this is my, one of my nine children, Hannah Hill, and we live at Route 1, Box 574, Harville, Missouri. And thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for letting us, allowing us to speak tonight. I just want to say that I raise my children to love God, first of all, to love America, and to teach them about how the government works and to respect the government, the federal government, the state government, and the local government. And that's why Hannah's here tonight, and my other daughter Lydia's back there also. I think I've got some other children back there, too, that they're a little older, so they've already been taught, so they know. And, you know, years ago, I was elected to this council, and before the first meeting that we had, we went on TV before we went on TV, I don't know if Mr. Black remembers or not, but he came to me and he told me that we like everything to go smooth on TV. We like everybody to agree on what we're voting on before we go on TV. And I informed Mr. Black that the people of this city elected me as their representative, and if it's what the people wanted, then I would vote for it, but it didn't matter if the rest of them voted. If the people didn't want it, if they voted for it, I would vote against it, because I would stand up and do what the people that put me in this office, I would do what they put me in here to do. And you all know that the people of the city put you guys in office to do their will. That's what our government's all about, state, local, and federal government, is do the will of people. And I know that you guys have the integrity to do that, and I appreciate that, and I just want to encourage you guys to do the will of the people. I spend thousands of dollars in this city, sales tax, property taxes, as well as those people back there behind me, they do the same. And there's thousands of others that do the same in this city that feel the same way that they do. And I just want to encourage you guys to keep this project downtown where it belongs, to allow my children, my grandchildren, I've got nine, I've got 10 of them now. I plan to have many, many more, so. And I have several children that are, have businesses downtown. At the Foxtrot Coffee Shop, my son and daughter and son-in-law own it, they manage it and they run it. My other daughter works there. I have a daughter that has a dojo up at Ozark Fitness. She teaches martial arts up there. We are looking at a building to buy downtown, to put her dojo in downtown, because the rent's going to be a lot, a lot less expensive. And by staying downtown, you guys helping the downtown to thrive, it will allow, as I said last week, I think it was, these younger people to have an opportunity to have businesses, to be able to afford the rent, to have businesses downtown, to start out on their journey in life. And I want to encourage you guys to do that. I know you have the integrity to vote for the will of the people, and it is the will of the people. It's been shown time and time again that you keep it downtown. The people, the people are here to speak tonight, and there are thousands more that didn't come, that will speak during the next election cycle. So this could go on and on and on, because they're the ones that you get the money from to take care of the city, to build the projects. And so I just encourage you guys to think about that, do the right thing the next time that we vote on this project, and think about it, and encourage young people to continue to put their money in downtown into businesses in their future. Thank you.
I believe we have Joy Ann Bates, or do I have that name wrong? I'm sorry.
You got it right. No, it's wrong. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me? And city council, it's a privilege to be here. I was born in Poplar Bluff, but my grandfather, Dennis M. Githens, was on the city council in the 1930s here in Butler County, and I did not realize, I always thought he was a judge, because that's what they called him at that time. He was Judge D.M. Githens. But he was on this council, and I'm very privileged to be here. I live at 995 Kinzer, and I lived away for almost 35 years. When I moved back to Poplar Bluff, the realtor that I was dealing with, she kept saying, "Well, you want to live out here," and I said, "No. I grew up in the Cynthia-Kinzer neighborhood." My brother, some of you know, Jay Githens, has lived in that house for 70 years, and I hope I don't offend anyone, but he likes to tell that he has been urinating in the same maroon toilet for over 70 years. At any rate, I was very fortunate to buy a house that will never be known as my house. It's only had three owners. It was the Tedrick family, and then the Hens family, and it's still called the Hens House, and I've been there 25 years. But I just want to say, I love my old neighborhood, and I love what's happened the last few years. With the help of Emily Whoppers and some other very conscientious people, the blocks of 900 and 1,000 block of Kinzer and Cynthia have been designated by the state of Missouri to be in the historical area. I have a medallion to prove it. My house is 104 years old. But I was glad to see Mr. Ron Hill. I did not know him until tonight. His son-in-law and daughter have bought a house on Cynthia, as well as two other young couples that bought on Kinzer and Cynthia, one in my block and one in the 900 block. These young people, number one, they like the affordability, number two, they like the bungalows, the historic things that you can tell, we have so many hysterical people and historical people that lived in that neighborhood. And the Dick Minatry House, if anybody had Miss Minatry, you can write a sentence, it has recently been refurbished, and there's a lot of interest in that old area. So what I see, and I was very privileged, I was a teacher for 41 years, my last 11 years, I had the privilege of having Jerica Fox at Sacred Heart School, and I'm loving the fact that young people, including a lot of students that I had here, are gravitating to the Foxtrot. They want things downtown. They see the benefit of that, and I think that that's something we owe them. I'm not trying to get political or try to put anyone down, but I really think that having the city hall downtown is so very, very important to keeping the thing going and tearing down some of the old properties with the new things that we know can happen. Danny Whitley lived two doors behind me on 10th Street. He used to ride his horse up 10th and stick the horse's nose in my front porch, or in my front screen, and scare me to death. So I've known Danny forever, and wherever... And wherever he thinks the police department should go, I respect that 100 percent. I'm with Charlotte Craig. He's a great, great person for that position. But I'm really urging you to do what 87 percent of the people that I have seen so far, and I think they have one more day to vote, have voted, on Facebook at least, to keep the City Hall downtown. Thank you, it was a privilege. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mr. Chester Pumphrey. Please state your name and address as you come up. To the-
I have it on the paper, and I have it on here, but just to be sure, my name is Chester Pumphrey, and I live, if you want to call it living, I live at 1119 Spring Street. My name is Chester Pumphrey. I hang out at 1119 Spring Street in Poplar Bluff. I rise to speak on vocabulary.
It's on, Mr. Pumphrey, we just can't hear it, sir.
In the English language, there are three words-
Put the microphone down to it a little closer.
I'm in bad health. Semi-lettered amongst us. Ten to use synonymously. They are ignorant, dumb, and stupid. But by no means do they mean the same thing. Let me elaborate. Ignorant simply means you have not been apprised of the facts. You got this foreign life without being informed of the facts, and that's ignorant. None of you have the slightest idea whether I'm wearing any underwear or an adult diaper. And therefore, in that respect, you are ignorant. Let me get off that. The next thing is the word dumb. Some of us are born not very bright. We have diminished brain capacity. Others of us have put some kind of stuff in our body and burned out our brain-
Mr. Pumphrey, with all due respect, we really can't hear, and it's not referring to the issue at hand.
They may have the facts, but they don't have the mental capacity to process those facts and do anything with it. Thirdly, is the word stupid. Bear in mind, I've already said, stupid does not mean dumb.
Mr. Pumphrey, would you please come back to the mic?
Stupid does not mean ignorant.
Your recording is not referring to the issue at hand, but with all due respect-
This person has the facts. And this person believes they're somewhat bright. And they have never been accused of being dumb.
Sir, we need to talk about City Hall.
In a given situation, they choose to ignore advice from terribly bright people, the advice of the preacher, the teacher-
Would you please tell us what you're referring to, sir?
The judge, or the police chief? And they go right ahead and do the wrong thing anyway. That's stupid. Now, you can call me paranoid if you want. But I came to believe a long time ago, that when government buys anything, I'm sorry, strike that, when government sells anything, they sell it for about half the price of what it's worth. And the buyer, realizing he's got a bargain, he kicks back part of that money to the people who made the decision. Probably half of it, probably 25 percent. And the other 25 percent, he keeps as his discount. On the other hand, when government buys something or has something built, the government pays probably at least 50 percent more than the fair value, and that 50 percent gets split up. Part of it is, and he did the work, but he got paid 50 percent more than what the work was worth. So about half of that, he put in his pocket as a bonus. Might have given his employees some of it, but that was a bonus. The other 25 percent, he split up and spread around to the people by way of kickbacks, to the people who made the decision to do it that way in the first place. Now, as to the situation at hand, we have a property on 2nd Street. I don't know how old it is, maybe 70 years old, but the house I live in is 70 years old, and I expect to live in it another 25 years. That property on 2nd Street, with a little repair, will last another 25 years. And we have a lot next to it in which, tear out that roof, park a couple double wides for the clerks, and then we have another lot which we just paid huge money for, why I don't know, and we could build some more space for city functions. And therefore, I say to you, again, let's repair what we have, because municipal utilities, the clerks that work at municipal utilities, they just spent a couple years doing their thing in a mobile home. So let's repair what we have, sit a couple double wides in what used to be a parking lot, and if that's not good enough, let's build on that lot we just bought. And I say to you, anything other than that would be outright stupidity. And now I yield for questions. If anyone has any questions and want me to explain the corruption that exists in your bid process. Thank you. Yield the floor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wally Duncan? No, no, I was calling someone, I was calling someone else.
I have a hearing, Papa, speak up, please.
Okay, yes, sir, we're done, yes, sir. So you can have a seat, we're done.
You can have a seat, Mr. Pumphrey.
How you doing, Mr. Pumphrey?
Do you want to ask any questions?
No, sir, we're not permitted to ask any questions at this time.
If you put the chair back where I got it, and I will leave, and you share the tape with him.
Yes, sir, the clerk has it, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Wally Duncan, I live at 3480 Normandy, here in Poplar Bluff, and I want to share some good news with you. Today, they started on the roof of the Rogers Theater. And obviously, I'm here on behalf of the Rogers Theater Board, we're very excited about that. And, and I want to thank this City Council for the support you gave us in obtaining that grant and being willing to sponsor us in that effort. We couldn't have done it without you. And I want to thank you, you probably weren't expecting a thank you this evening. Anyway, obviously, we're excited about the prospect of downtown revitalization. And, and that's what I want to speak to you for, just for a few minutes, and I promise I will be brief. But some things that have come to my mind that I wanted to share with you. And, and to start off with, you got to look back historically. Historically, downtown has been the home of the city of Poplar Bluff. It's never been anywhere else but downtown. So, so there's a historic component here when we're talking about what to do and where to locate downtown. If you think about it, the city of Poplar Bluff has made a larger investment in downtown than any one or any entity that I can think of. Historically, you have more invested in the city of Poplar Bluff than anybody. And just think about it. We have the Black River Coliseum, a multimillion dollar facility that was, was built downtown, a deliberate effort, or excuse me, a deliberate decision to, to put it downtown. And I think that was the right decision, and I want to commend Councilman Ron Black, who happened to be on the council at that time, and, and was part of that decision. And I think it was a good one. Incidentally, in addition to the Coliseum, we have the Poplar Bluff Library, it's undergone great expansion, it's a beautiful facility now. You have down the road, you have the street department, you have the water treatment plant, you're getting ready to put about $20 million into a new treatment facility. You've got the electric generating plant, you've got Hillcrest Park, you've got the swimming pool, you've got the skate park, you've got the art museum, all of these in, in an area in close proximity, right in the hub of Poplar Bluff, right downtown. So you think about it, you've got quite an investment here already. And if I'm an investor, and I've got property somewhere, then it seems to, to me, to behoove me, that I want to do everything I can to protect that investment, and to make that investment grow, to make sure that that investment is going to reap the, the benefits that I'm envisioning for it. It just makes sense, the way I think, to protect that investment. The city's already invested so much, the city has property here. It just seems to me that if, if we're thinking about moving the facility, City Hall from Poplar, or from, from downtown, it needs to, to have a really compelling reason to do so. I, I was not at the last meeting, I did watch it on the video, in fact, I watched it twice, and I, I read the report that Mr. Sweeney presented. And, you know, I understand he was presenting options, but as I read through that, and as I watched it on, on YouTube, you know, nothing is coming out to me to be a compelling reason why it should be moved. And to me, it should be a compelling reason. Now, you know, I, I know, because I've, I've lived here for a long time, you know, some people feel like downtown is dead, that we shouldn't try to save it, we just need to move on and, and just forget about it. My response to that is, downtown is not going to just disappear, something's going to be here. And, and it's up to us, and not just you on the City Council, it's up to everybody in this room, to, to make downtown something that we can be proud of. We need to all work together and, and make it something, you know, and we've got the option, we can make it something to be proud of, or, or we can just ignore it and, and let it become something that we don't even want to come to. And that's not good for our community. So please think about those things. I know it can be done. I was, I'm sure you all are familiar with the Missouri Municipal Review. I, I read an article just the other day on Washington, Missouri, and I brought copies for you, and it's a short article, and I would invite you to read it. Washington, Missouri, if you're not familiar, is a town of about 15,000 people, beautiful town, beautiful facility. They had problems with their downtown a few years ago also, but they started thinking outside the box, some of the things that I've heard here tonight, they implemented. And they are doing things with downtown, in fact, downtown has become a drawing card for them, especially for the younger people. And I'll just read this quote. "When marketing Washington as a place for young families to land, the downtown area became the city's most effective recruitment tool." So it can be done, and I would ask if you would please take one?
Sure.
And again, it's a short article, but please review it, there are all kinds of things that can be done here, and I appreciate your time and your willingness to listen to us on this long night, and I thank you for your time, and I thank you for the job you do.
Thank you, Wally.
We have Mr. Robert Durbin.
My name's Robert Durbin, I live 1609 North 13th Street here in Poplar Bluff. I've been in the same place for 22 years. Never felt the need to come before you guys before. Unfortunately, I'm missing my daughter's first soccer game tonight, choosing to be here instead. I know that a lot of people are upset about where it is, how much money's being spent. I couldn't care less, honestly. I see $600,000 spent for a consulting firm that any one of you could have asked at a coffee shop, or any place that you have meetings with people of Poplar Bluff. Why do we need an outside firm to make a decision for us? Is that not something we can decide for ourselves? I mean, $600,000 to make a decision so that we can blame it on somebody else? We have an, an order- It's not, it's not about that. This is about me. I live here, I pay taxes here, I want to see my money spent more responsibly. I'm angry? Yes. With who? No one in particular. It's the decisions that's being made that are not being made for the citizens of Poplar Bluff. I know some of you. There's no way that $600,000 spent to a consulting firm can be justified. In my mind, we have the Old Nygret Clinic, Lucy Lee Hospital, that we have taken over. It's non-repair, is the way I'm understanding it, right? So, it's going to have to be either sold off to somebody else to deal with, or we're going to have to deal with it. So, even if we move to a different location, we're still going to have to deal with that, right? We're spending money, and we keep putting it off and making it worse. Why can't we deal with what we have in front of us? And, and be where we need to be? I, I don't know that the City Hall needs to be in any particular location, police department, I don't know. I'm, I'm not aware of a police department response from a police department building. They're on patrol, and they respond to that location. So where that is located, if we're going to include a jail or something like that, I would think would be closer to where they would be dealt with downtown. The City Hall, the people that you're dealing with in City Hall are coming in for permits or whatever, a central location for everyone involved. or whatever, a central location for everyone involved, I think would be more responsible and money well-spent. If we're going out on Shelby Road, which is becoming more of a retail area, that that property being sold to a retail development would bring more revenue into the city of Popper Bluff, rather than us taking it up for a City Hall and not getting the benefit to that. But at the end of the day, what really matters is where are we spending our money? Why are we giving it to somebody outside the city of Popper Bluff? $600,000, really? For a decision that could be made in a coffee shop? I just don't understand. I don't understand business, I'm not a businessman, that's for sure. But I do pay taxes in the city of Popper Bluff, and I would like to see my money better spent in the city of Popper Bluff. The Nyberg Clinic, the old doctor's hospital, I don't know, we took over the Lucy Lee Hospital, are we going to take over the doctor's hospital too? It's just an eyesore that's sitting there rotting away, same with Nyberg Clinic, that we're sitting in, that we're going to have to deal with. I say, and I hope at some point, everyone will come together and agree, that we need to deal with what we have, instead of reaching out for something else. Whether we remodel, rebuild, I guess the parking garage has become unusable. It should be demolished, start all over again. We bought another building on the corner, it's already a done deal, right? So why can't we deal with what we have, instead of reaching out for more and spending $600,000 to have somebody to blame our decision on? I think we're all adults, we can make decisions for ourselves, we don't need somebody to blame our decisions on. And I would please, I have children in this town, I have grandchildren in this town, please be more responsible of the money that we entrust you with. Thank you.
That was the last citizen's input. I would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone for your input, and it's not taken lightly. At this time, we will proceed with our normal meeting. Thanks once again. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess. We're back in session. Item seven, consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single vote or a single action of the city council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so.
Mayor Nunn, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Item eight, workshop items for discussion. A, the city council will review a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding the implementation of primary metering rates.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This primary metering rate would be for industrial power customers. This new rate classification must meet certain criteria. The industrial customer must have a connected load of 5,000 kVA or more and be served by primary metering at 13,200 volts. We discussed this at an earlier advisory board and would recommend the adoption of the primary metering rate. Any questions?
Motion to pass this voting session October 7.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, the city council will review a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding the implementation of an economic development rider for the industrial power customers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Economic Development Rider, or EDR, will be used to encourage industrial development in the city. The service will only be available to qualified customers who do not sell or provide goods and services directly to the general public. It will also only be available for any new or expanded facilities built after March 1st of 2019. Customer must meet certain criteria to be eligible for the EDR, and after the fifth contract year, the incentive provision will terminate. Again, the program's purpose is to encourage industrial development, which will increase economic development opportunities in the city. This was discussed at an earlier advisory board and would recommend the approval of the Economic Development Rider. Any questions?
Motion we pass this to the voting session October 7.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Item C, the city council will review a petition for annexation of property located at 3390 Canal Boulevard and owned by Jerry Ann Roland and Stacy Blankenship.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As he stated, the Busy Kids Therapy LLC, owned by Jerry Roland and Stacy Blankenship, are requesting annexation of 3390 Canal Boulevard, which is approximately a half an acre in size. We are asking that you pass this on to the voting session tonight, and we would hold, if approved, hold a public hearing at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So move. Be the voting session tonight.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Item nine, action required items. A, Bill Number 8175, the city council will take action on an ordinance relative to change order number one, relative to the 11th Street roadway project.
Motion for first reading of Bill 8175.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one relating to the Popper Bluff 11th Street Bridge and Roadway Project.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried, counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one relating to the Popper Bluff 11th Street Bridge and Roadway Project.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, vote Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Bill Number 8175 is adopted. Item B, B, Bill Number 8176, the city council will take action on an ordinance relative to a request from the Planning and Zoning and Inspection Department to amend section 405.095A1I of the Code of Ordinances relative to sign regulations.
Motion for first reading of Bill 8176.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri Code of City Ordinances, Section 405.095A1I relating to sign regulations.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri Code of City Ordinances, Section 405.095A1I relating to sign regulations.
Motion for adoption of Bill 8176.
Second.
Any further discussion? Clerk Young.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Bill Number 8176 is adopted. Item CC, Bill Number 8177, the city council will take action on an ordinance relative to a request from Planning and Zoning, from Planning and Inspection Department to amend section 405.095A3K1 of the Code of Ordinances relative to fees for billboards.
Motion for first reading.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri Code of City Ordinances, Section 405.095A3K1 relating to fees for billboards.
Motion for second reading, Bill 8177.
Second.
Any further discuss... Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried, counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri Code of City Ordinances, Section 405.095A3K1 relating to fees for billboards.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Bill Number 8177 is adopted. Item DD, Bill Number 8178, the City Council will take action on an ordinance relative to proposed amendments to business licenses and regulations, Chapter 605.040, computation of tax generally, 605270, computation of tax wholesale licenses, peddlers and solicitors, 16.040, fee and taxicabs, limousines, 45.120, license fee A, and 645.260, fee pertaining to business license fees.
Motion for first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri Code of City Ordinances relative to business licenses and regulations, Chapter 605.040, license tax levied, 605175, fees for operating in open flea markets, 605.260, computation of taxes generally, 605.270, computation of tax wholesale licenses, peddlers and solicitors, 610.040, fee and taxicab limousines, 645.120, license fee A, and 645.260, fee pertaining to business license fees.
Motion for second, second reading of Bill 8178.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri Code of City Ordinances relative to business licenses and regulations, Chapter 605.040, license tax levied, 605.175, fees for operating in open flea markets, 605.260, computation of taxes generally, 605.270, computation of tax wholesale license, peddlers and solicitors, 610.040, fee and taxicab limousines, 645.120, license fee A, and 645.260, fee pertaining to business license
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, vote Clerk Young.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Bill Number 8178 is adopted. Item EE, Resolution Number 1906, the City Council will take action on a resolution with respect to annexation of certain unincorporated area of the city of Papa Bluff, such property being located at 3390 Canal Boulevard and owned by Jerry Ann Rowland and Stacy Blankenship.
Move for the reading of Resolution Number 1906. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
A resolution with respect to the annexation of certain unincorporated areas to the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, such property being located at 3390 Canal Boulevard and owned by Jerry Ann Rowland and Stacy Blankenship.
Motion for adoption of Resolution Number 1906.
Second.
Any further discussion? Clerk Young.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution Number 1906 is adopted. Item FF, the City Council of the city of Papa Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the Open Meetings Law of Section 16.021.1, .2, .3, .9, .11, .12, .13, and .14 revised statute of Missouri, following the city manager's report.
Make the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Massingham.
Just a couple items. I wanted to let you all know, when you get a chance, if you go around the east side of Papa Bluff down South C Street by the church, the new road and entrance into Clinton Park has been completed as gravel right now. Eventually, we'll pave it, but it'll probably be next year. We also widened the entrance into Clinton Park. We had some trouble a couple of years ago where an ambulance needed to get out and they weren't able to get out because it was a one-way road, so that's been taken care of. Also, Chanon Drive, where we changed the location of the road off of Baron Road, has been completed. If you get a chance, go by and see that. The, if you get a chance driving home tonight after the council meeting, drive on the 500 block of Vine Street. We've got the Edison light bulbs, the zigzags across the street there that really turned out nice. And also, Municipal Utilities has moved in their building on Sunset, and I'm sure Mr. Bach would be more than happy to give you all a tour if you come by there, so that's all I have.
We do have guests in the audience, Papa Bluff High School. Thank you all for being here tonight. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the regular session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned.